I'm going to call the hearing to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Griffin. I'm the Chair of the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission. Joined tonight virtually with Commissioner Jennifer Potter, Commissioner Leo Asuncion, and members of the Consumer Advocate's office. Tonight's hearing is being recorded and will be later transcribed by a court reporter. A copy of the recording will also be available on the commission's YouTube channel. Again, a reminder, anyone that would wish to testify, please send us a note in the chat feature, and we'll keep a tally of those requesting to testify. So we'll start first with those that have asked through the WebEx, and then we'll go to folks on the phone, but so far, we don't see anyone on the phone, but we're also keeping track of that, too. State law requires that the commission hold a public hearing whenever a public utility proposes a rate increase. This evening, the commission will be holding a public hearing for docket number 2020-0089. The purpose of this hearing is for the commission to take testimony, not to answer questions about the application. Testifiers can always contact both the applicant and the consumer advocate if you have questions for them. The information for the applicants are in the docket record in their application, their contact information, and for the consumer advocate, if you go to their website, I believe you should be able to find information to contact them. La Niopoco Irrigation Company referred to as La Niopoco or the applicant. Requests are described in detail in its application filed June 5, 2020, and in the hearing notice. In summary, the applicant is requesting temporary rate increases to its user charges and standby charges. The user rates, non-bulk rates, applicant requests 125.6% increase in non-bulk rates from 76 cents to $1.71 per 1,000 gallons. Bulk rates, applicant requests 125.6% increase in bulk rates from 13 cents to 86 cents per 1,000 gallons. Standby charges, applicant requests increased standby charges by 125.6% per meter size, 1 inch, 1 and 1/2, 2, 3, 4, 6, and over 6 inches. The scope of the public hearing tonight is limited to the issues listed at the outset of the hearing that are included in La Niopoco's application. The ground rules for testifying, and this follows our normal format we would have in person. Again, this is our first time to do this virtually on this platform, so we do ask your patience. The applicant will be given 8 minutes to discuss their application. Consumer Advocate will be given 8 minutes to explain its role in the process and present any testimony. All other testifiers will have 5 minutes to present testimony at the hearing. Testifiers may not give all or any portion of their allotted time to another testifier, and anyone can submit comments and writing to the commission by email or by regular mail. If you do that, please reference docket number 20-0089. You can email comments to puc comments at hawaii.gov, and on our website, you can find our address if you wish to send those through regular mail. If you testify this evening, at the beginning of your testimony, please, A, identify yourself, state whether you're testifying on behalf of an organization or as an individual, state whether you support or oppose the applicant's request. And with that, we're going to commence the public hearing. We'll begin with the testimony from the applicant, La Niopoco, followed by the consumer advocate, and then, again, anyone who's from the public who's indicated they wish to testify via the WebEx chat feature. If you wish to do that, please type your message into the chat box, and we'll keep a running tally. And after we get through that, if we do have people on the phone, we will go over to the phone. It's a little different process to check in with them, but as far as I can tell so far, there's nobody solely logged in through the phone. So with that, we're going to proceed now with testimony from the applicants. So I believe Mr. Strand is speaking, and the host will unmute you. And we will be keeping time. We'll send a message in the chat when you have 1 minute and 30 seconds left. So with that, Mr. Wallerstein, if you can unmute Mr. Strand, and we'll proceed. Thank you. Sorry, still, Mr. Strand, you're muted. I think you need to unmute after we unmute you.
Does that work?
Yes, can hear you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Griffin and Commissioners Potter and Asuncion. My name is Robert Strand, and I'm an attorney with the Carl Smith Ball Law Firm, representing the applicant, La Niopoco Irrigation Company. With me this evening is Glenn Tremble, who is the Secretary of the applicant, and my co-counsel, Arseema Muller. We very much appreciate the opportunity to briefly review the company's application for temporary rate relief this evening. The company's application for a temporary rate increase was filed on June 26, 2020. As stated in the application, the applicant has been operating at a loss under its present rate since 2019 due to a severe limitation imposed by the Commission on Water Resource Management on the use of stream water as a water source for non-potable irrigation. The additional cost of providing a substitute water source has resulted in increased operating and capital costs, which cannot be recovered under the current rate structure. Incidentally, I should mention that the last rate increase, the rates that are established now were established in 2003, some 17 years ago. The Chair has mentioned what the proposed rates are. I won't repeat that. The temporary rates, if approved by the commission, would remain in effect until final rates are approved on the application for a general rate increase, which was filed by the applicant on December 30. Given the continued losses experienced by the applicant totaling $582,775 through September 30 of last year, and applicant's inability to obtain additional funds to cover future operating losses, if we don't get a temporary rate increase as requested, the applicant will be unable to guarantee that it can maintain continuous service to its customers. As a result, applicant has respectfully requested that the commission approve applicant's request for temporary rate relief. The consumer advocate has filed a statement of position, and I'm sure that they will discuss that in their turn during their time before the commission. But in that filing, they recognize that absent a temporary rate increase, La Niopoco Irrigation Company may not have the ability to provide continuous service to its customers. And I think that's self-evident by the losses that they're sustaining and the fact that the request for the temporary rate increase have demonstrated probable entitlement and certainly have demonstrated financial need. I won't go through, again, the situation with respect to losses. They're averaging approximately $65,000 per month, and we have submitted financial information showing that the current assets of the applicant are about $92,000, consisting largely, that was as of a certain date. That was as of, I think, about September 30. And the accounts payable, by contrast, were over four times that amount, $420,540. If there isn't temporary rate relief granted, the company will likely not have the ability to pay its vendors and its suppliers and its contractors. The main reason for the increased costs, besides the fact that there hasn't been an increase for 17 years, is the loss of the stream water based on the Commission for Water Resource Management requiring that much of the stream water be returned to the stream. And that poses a couple of issues. Number one, the requirement to develop new water sources, which will be deepwater wells or groundwater wells or skimming wells, and the fact that instead of transmitting the water largely by gravity flow, it'll have to be transmitted, pumped, and transmitted by power that's generated either from diesel fuel or from electricity, which is much more costly, obviously, than gravity flow. The company had tried to use potable water as a substitute for the lost stream water, but it turned out that the pumping from potable wells increased the salinity in the potable well, so that had to be stopped because we do have a sister company providing potable water, and it was untenable to continue pumping potable water for use for agricultural purposes when the salinity content was making it unacceptable for use for potable purposes. So, again, I won't go through every part of the written statement we filed, but basically, where the company is losing an average of $65,000 a month, it does not have the ability to fund that loss, and the temporary rate increase is urgently needed in order for the company to continue to be able to provide service, continuous service to its customers. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would certainly entertain any questions that the commissioners have.
Thank you, Mr. Strand, but in these hearings, we're just taking public testimony. So I appreciate that, and if that concludes your remarks from the applicants, we'll move to the consumer advocate and believe Mr. Nishina is speaking.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Nishina.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Griffin, Commissioners Potter and Asuncion, and members of the public. My name is Jean Nishina, and I'm with the Division of Consumer Advocacy in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, also known as the Consumer Advocate. Consumer Advocate represents the interests of the consumers in public utilities for reliable utility services at customer cost and rate. I'm here to listen to listeners' comments regarding La Niopoco Irrigation Company's proposal at thousand, which is approximately 126% higher than the rate. As mentioned by Chair, the Consumer Advocate will take an end of La Niopoco's request and assess whether the As part of our analysis, we will conduct discovery, where we will seek data and information to evaluate the company's support for the requested rate increase. Then later in this proceeding, we will submit the results of our analysis and recommendations to the commission for their decision on the company's requested relief. As I mentioned earlier, the purpose why I'm here tonight is to listen to the community's comments and concerns with the requested increase, so I encourage the public to express their opinions to the commission regarding La Niopoco's proposal and the impact that the requested relief might have on you if it approves a requested increase. Your testimony will help both the Consumer Advocate and the commission in our work throughout this proceeding. As we move forward, please feel free to contact the Consumer Advocate's office at any time to share your thoughts, concerns, and questions regarding other utilities. Again, this need to provide comments, you can send office or the public comment. Normally, I offer that, you know, please come to me, and then I can contact you. But due to the nature of it, our phone number is area code 886-2800. Our email is dca@dca.hawaii.gov, or as mentioned by Chair, which is cca.gov/dca. At that, Chair Griffin, thank you for the opportunity to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Nishina. Just to, you were breaking up a little bit, and so, folks, I may ask if, in the course of your testimony, if you're breaking up, the first thing we try to do is if you turn your camera off, sometimes the connection is better, and we at least can still hear the audio. So I'll give probably a cue in the chat if we're having trouble, but hopefully, Mr. Nishina posts his testimony in the docket record, so pretty much everything he said is available there. Thank you, Mr. Nishina. We're going to move. Next, Mr. Ryan Hurley is the first testifier that's requested to speak tonight. Our host will unmute you, and then you'll need to unmute yourself. And again, for folks just tuning in, please send a chat message to the host, and we'll take people in order that have requested to testify through the WebEx, and then we'll move folks on the phone to see if you would like to request. With that, Mr. Hurley, I think, are you unmuted?
I think so. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sounds good. Please proceed.
Good evening, Chair Griffin, Commissioners Potters and Asuncion. Normally, I would be looking and waving, I guess, but I hope you all can see me. My name is Ryan Hurley, and I alongside my co-counsel Lance Collins and Ms. Bianca Osaka, we represent intervenors Na Akane O'Malley and Jekim Okukaku. Given the short nature of tonight's meeting, I'm just going to keep it very brief. I do want to highlight some of our points from our statement of position which we filed today. I would encourage the commissioners and anyone interested to go online and view that statement of position. It has a much more robust conversation of some of the issues that we're going to discuss, as well as a lot of relevant case law. So to get straight into it, intervenors oppose this rate increase. There's a number of reasons that I'm going to touch on, highlight some of them. And I think the first one is that we think that this rate increase is going to violate some fundamental and constitutional rights that they have as traditional and cultural practitioners. You know, this is obviously a very complex area of law, and so once again, I'm pleased to refer everyone to our statement of position. But the fact of the matter is that intervenors, they live in Owen Culliana lands that get water from LIC system. And actually, there is a written agreement between LIC's principles, an interim agreement between LIC's principles and predecessors. And please, when I say LIC, I'm obviously referring to La Niopoco Irrigation, the applicant in this case. I'm just trying to be brief. But there is an actual interim agreement with LIC's predecessors and intervenors, or an LLC associated with intervenors, guaranteeing them and promising them the delivery of water at no charge. And in this agreement, they acknowledge their Culliana rights to this water. Furthermore, in the CPCN, it is referenced, they reference these homeowners and water recipients that are not charged and agree to continue not charging them. In this application, and the rate, both the temporary rate increase and what appears to be the regular rate increase, it's a little hazy, and I think that's one of the intervenors' main issues here, is this application is definitely deficient in a lot of information regarding some of this. For example, this interim agreement, which is attached to our position statement, I don't believe has been filed with the commission. That raises a number of issues with us. You know, moving on from that, I mean, I will just summarize that that we do believe, intervenors believe that they have a right, and this is a constitutionally and Hawaii, both Hawaii State Constitution and other laws, protecting these traditional customary rights, and imposing this rate increase and charging these intervenors who have not been charged for this water would create a hardship on them and therefore is not just and reasonable. Moving on, I think another major, major issue here is that La Niopoco Irrigation is really failing to disaggregate development costs from utility costs here. And once again, we dive into this in our statement of position here, but La Niopoco is basically saying that, hey, we cannot continue to operate because of the inflow stream standards. However, at the same time, they are aggressively moving and performing CIP projects that likely, if they were both energy, electricity, or telecom communications, would trigger approval by the commission. I'd also point out here that the commission doesn't have any applicable water rules that apply right now, which would probably say that, hey, at 500,000 or 750,000 for a CIP project, you need to go before the commission. That's not happening right now, and so we feel that La Niopoco is trying to move some of these development costs. And it's important to remember, La Niopoco is a water system that's developed to feed subdivisions, to feed agricultural subdivisions by the principles of La Niopoco. They're land developers. So I think that's important to get across here. And if we think that it's important that any rate increase, that we really disaggregate those costs, those development costs, and I don't think we can do that right now. I only have 1 minute left, so I will just summarize. I think we should also look to the recent Young Brothers case for an emergency rate increase there. They talk about things like an audit. They talk about things like rebate. I think if we're going to do an emergency rate case, we need to make sure those are included. There is some serious financial trouble with this utility, but I think that a lot of it is development-related, and their plans to expand versus is actual related to providing reasonable service for their existing rate pairs. I'm going to wrap it up there. I know we're not taking questions, but feel free to email if you have any. And please look for the statement of position we filed today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Next testifier is Consuelo Apollo Goncalves. Mr. Wallerstein, if you can unmute, and then that individual need to unmute themselves, and we'll get started. Thank you. Do we have told, at least in our, the participant list is listed as FM? So can you please unmute yourself, please, if you still wish to testify? Okay. In the meantime, we'll once again solicit any other interested members of the public wishing to testify. Please send your request in to our host. Okay, it looks like we have one. Mr. Wallerstein, we have one person that has raised her hand. Raise hand. Do you want to unmute and check? Can you guys hear us? Hi. Yes. Please state your name for the record.
I'm just going to clarify something. We have a number of people here in our room that are going to testify, but we're all coming under Kauai Kaua'ula, and the FM was one of our people here.
I'm here. I'm Consuelo Apollo Haping Goncalves.
Can I just, just to clarify, when we, it's kind of one, you get one block per person. So if you wanted, please state your name, and you can state your affiliation with the organization. But if you want to testify, kind of, one group, we have one time slot, if that makes sense. Because we take your name as part of the record here. So if you could, please state your name and your affiliation. But please proceed. Each individual gets up to 5 minutes.
Well, my name is Consuelo Apollo Haping Goncalves. You know, I'm really not for this rate increase for La Niopoco. To me, they've been doing shady business over here. And, you know, I've lived here all my life, and, gosh, I mean, I just don't understand about what's going on here, you know? Born and raised here on Maui, lived in Lahaina practically all my life. Not worth. I feel that they shouldn't go on. They're trying to turn my wahana, which I'm not liking either. As far as everything goes, I see this shitty business. I oppose to everything. I oppose to this rate increase. I oppose to them doing charging Culliana. You know, when, I don't know if you guys realize this, but when plantation kills down, the water was supposed to return to the people. That's what it was. You know, and it's not. With all the violence against them, they should get their PC like this. But that's all I have to say right now. Mahalo.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I missed, could you please state your name for the record?
Consuelo Apollo Haping Goncalves.
Thank you. And then, I guess, on this same connection, please, any others wishing to testify, just please state your name, and we get up to 5 minutes each.
Okay, mahalo. Aloha, my name is Matikona. I'm 37 years old. I'm just here in Lahaina. I'm a farmer that is dependent on this system that's provided by LIC. I'm in opposition to the rate increase. I've just invested, I have 4 children, and I've just invested 4 years of my life into a 12-acre farm, parcel that I'm farming currently today. And if this rate increase was to go forward, it would largely change my ability to continue pursuing my dream as being a farmer and providing a full security network and system for our community in Lahaina. Furthermore, the current infrastructure that is installed in this area and the updates that they are trying to do now to upgrading systems of these skimming wells, the skimming well is also a secondary system attached to our farm system. And as a farmer, we test our water systems, and the salinity level in the skimming well is very high, not suitable for our crop, but it would be suitable for like a grass lawn or maybe firefighting, but that's the only reason why we installed it for us. The system, I've also been able to monitor a lot of the system and see how it's managed and how it's working. The corporations have been around for a while in town now. And it's just very outdated and falling apart, and they made a lot of efforts just recently, installing little meters and balancing there to, I'm not sure what the intention was, but for me, it's kind of late in the game where we've been maintaining a lot of these systems for ourselves to keep it going. And, yeah, I just cannot say that it will be, you know, there's also a number of pending development plans proposed and approved in this area, which will be depending on the same system. And if the current status right now is a 2-day watering system for many of the users, it shouldn't be able to anywhere, even if they expand their increase of the rate, it's not going to give them any more water available for the area. And it just doesn't make too much sense to us that they can claim that they don't have enough water so that they limit everybody to a 2-day use. And then they want to go ahead and develop 4 to, I think it's even 5 pending development sites that will all be depending on the system. There's no way that they don't have any other water source within this watershed in the aquifer to sustain any other development that they'll bring forward. And so my concerns are those. That's where I was trying, my opposition to this. There's numerous other reasons that I'm confident a lot of other people that are testifying today will be able to touch on those as well. So I'm just bringing to the table what I have as a farmer on site in the area, a dependent on the system and cannot afford to take any rate increase, especially not now. They're calling it a temporary one, but when I try to read through the present application, it doesn't seem like a temporary. It seems there is, it's a permanent rate increase. And I can't really read through that stuff and really understand it to detail, but I don't believe it's just a temporary rate increase. And that's another concern I would have, even at any rate I can afford it. So that's just my testimony for today. If there's anything that I would like to say as well is that with the interim insurance standard being at 3.4 million gallons is the end goal, there's expectation for the street to restore to that condition. On the reading of the lowest point of the On the reading of the lowest point of the water systems of, of that it can provide is, is at three point four. So on the lowest date, that means that there would be no water available for them to take at all out of the, out of the readings that came through from the mill time, all the from the early, uh, sixties, I believe is the, is the earliest record we could find of monitoring the water amount that comes out of Kaua'ula. And, um, we, there's, just knowing that alone tells you that there's no water system, there's no water available for increase of any sort. And that, um, there's even been times in the past that some of the fire hydrants in there were in a very fire prone area and some of those fire hydrants are not active at times. And, um, it's just, if, if the system isn't capable of producing the magnitude that is needed for its deployment.
Can you please summarize and conclude? The five minutes is up.
Okay. So, yeah, that, that's enough. Um, again, thank you. My name is Kekona. Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you, sir. Um, we'll stay on the line if there's others there that wishing to testify. Again, please state your name.
My name is Kiamu and I am a Kula, in so-called determined rate increase for the private sector coming from a public utility. And I have grave concerns that my family had suffered major consequences in this valley on the dictatorship pertaining to Lani'opoko irrigation company here to provide necessities for my kuliana families. And I am speaking on behalf of my wahana, the Kupu families of Kaua'ula. And there's also other families that is keying in and I hope they can, they can also key in to the importance as to why this water that come from the surface provides water for our taro patches, um, that comes from basically a, a system, a traditional system from an old historical P'elania way that's been, uh, for many, many generations. And the trouble that we go through is that ever since Lani'opoko irrigation company took management of this area, they cut off our traditional necessities of P'elania way that provided water so we can cultivate our taro patches within the kulianas that we reside in. Not only that area, but also alongside the bottom of the river where a lot of families also are dependent from the, the surface water that comes alongside the river, that this company has many times turned off the water and not even informing the kuliana of what basically is happening, especially within this past week on the major upgrades that they've been doing, uh, within the past week. And we've suffered consequences for over twenty years that all of a sudden everything starts to blow up, um, where they're trying to provide the maximum amount that's coming from the river, but still, uh, there's a determination pertaining to the industry post standard that was set by the commission, a lot of resource management that owes also is still undetermined on whether or not they're getting the adequate amount of water that is supposed to be placed back into the river. We've seen the river go off and on many times. We filed many, uh, complaints with the Lani'opoko irrigation company on their failure feeding forms that they're going to turn off the water. Our taro patches have been many times, um, to a point as to where it, um, at many times are being very detrimental to the life and longevity of our kuliana and our responsibility to provide necessary for our families and our community. I have many concerns. I oppose, I very much oppose to this rate increase. And I also was given a word that this Lani'opoko irrigation company is also looking at, um, charging the kulianas for the rate also as well, knowing that our rights are protected on the Hawaii State Constitution out of Article Section Seven and knowing that also our rights come from, uh, the rights to gather on the HRS seven dash one. And we feel that this is a detrimental finding for not just our kuliana families, but kuliana families throughout the state of Hawaii that this measure or this request would create abdominal effect to the all kulianas throughout the state of Hawaii. And I'm asking for this commission to lay heavily upon the decision that you make that may be detrimental to the lives and the longevity of our families and our kuliana, especially, specifically in the Lahaina, Boku and the Kaula region, as well as the service area that is provided by Lani'opoko irrigation company. I am, um, appalled that over twenty some odd years, twenty plus some odd years, that we haven't come to a final agreement on what is the right necessity so we, the kulianas of Kaula can live a long and happy and harmonious life without being dictated and without our water resources being cut off any time they feel necessary to cut those water resources and toss the rock. So I mahalo, mahalo you, the commission, uh, the public commission, me, the, my issues are concerned and I, once again, I hope you lay heavily on the decision that is before you. Mahalo you for this call. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, are there any others on that line wishing to testify? Let's check one more time.
No, there's, okay.
Okay.
I'm not asked.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is, um, Jordan Hocker.
Okay. Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, hello. My name is Jordan Hocker. Um, I actually live in Kula. I am pursuing a degree in sustainable science management and the things that were covered by, um, testifiers before me, I think are all very, very valid points, so I won't cover them. Um, my testimony is to say that I resent the, I strongly oppose the rent, uh, the rate increase and I resent the implication that a utility company that's supposed to be serving the public would suffer from having to restore in-stream flow. And so my thing is that, um, the amount of in-stream flow should have been restored a long time ago. Uh, that's what's best for the environment. That's what's best for everyone involved, except somebody trying, a company perhaps trying to make a profit. Um, if you have to go to doing the right thing in terms of water management and it costs you money, then, um, I would say that, I would hope that the utility company would be less short sighted in the future. So I think that the rate increase that is being proposed is more about water mismanagement and having to move into an area where they're being asked to manage water more responsibly. I also know that there are many proposed developments in the area that are only going to increase the water demand. Um, from a sustainability standpoint, I'm very concerned about the way that water's being managed, um, on that side of the island and really the entire island. As our temperature increases gradually, the rainfall that is afforded up on the mountain becomes less and less. And so a rate, a temporary rate increase might seem like a solution currently, um, but I really wonder what will that look like in the future? Less and less water is available, so the rates to the consumer go up and up and up because this actually seems more to me like mismanagement, a management issue of a public utility. Um, I'm deeply concerned at what I've heard from kuliana, um, kuliana families in the Kaua'ula, the, uh, Kaua'ula area. Um, and I think personally that they should be consulted more on the management of water in that area. Um, water is a finite natural resource. It is a human right and it should be available to everyone. Um, when it is not, when it is pushed more into a business sector or rate increases happen because a company also has affiliations where they want to be able to provide water, um, that they're promising are there in order to get proper permitting, um, and zoning for these developments, it just, the whole thing is very murky. And so while I hear a very straightforward argument that returning, uh, restoring flow in-stream has cost LIC money, um, I would say that that shouldn't be on the consumer. Um, that mismanagement of water, not managing water as an aquifer, taking it from one place and piping it all the way over to another is not an end game. It is not a sustainable solution and it's not something that's going to work for the people who live here in the future. And so, um, I would beg the commission to take that into consideration, that our management of water really has been very poor and we've been playing with a lot of extra resource. But as time goes on, um, in terms of climate change, in terms of temperature increase, we're going to have this issue more and more and more. And so I would really, uh, ask the commission to thoroughly consider all of the different angles here. Um, and, and I, yeah, I can't say this any clearer, I strongly oppose this rate increase. Uh, thank you for hearing me during this time.
Thank you, Ms. Hocker. Uh, at the moment, we have nobody else that has requested, uh, through the chat to testify. Um, we'll renew the request again. Please send the chat message, um, and ask in any other requests. Um, sorry, this is a little cumbersome, but we have, since we have folks on the phone, there's no other way to, um, state whether you want to testify. We're going to go to folks on the phone and unmute you. And when you hear the, um, the request to unmute, you're going to, on the phone, you're going to press star six and then you can state whether you wish to testify or not. Um, so, uh, with that, our host will go to folks on the phone and so hopefully when you hear the requests, we're going to go one by one. Um, you'll hear on the phone, it'll say we've been requested to unmute, you press star and six and then just state whether you wish to, wish to testify or not. So please go ahead, Mike.
Hello?
Hi, yes. Do you wish to testify?
Yes, I do.
Great. Uh, please state your name.
Okay. My name is Kaniloa Kamalno. I, I am from the Waeruku side or Wahe'ee and I would like to, um, testify this evening.
Uh, please continue. You have five minutes.
All right. Uh, so I'd like to revert back to what was said by the, uh, the attorneys that are representing Kaula. Um, you know, that case that we're talking about, which happened in eighteen ninety-seven, uh, you know, already was established, I mean, it's a Supreme Court ruling, um, though it's from the Republic of Hawaii, but anyway, they recognize the traditional customary practices of how the water was distributed, the, the timeframe and how everything, uh, worked during that time and they supported that in that, in that case. Um, so the problem here is, I guess, uh, Lani'opoko, uh, irrigation, um, company fails to consult, uh, with the, uh, kuliana heirs that, uh, are protected under that, um, uh, under that, uh, citing, um, back in eighteen ninety-seven. And, you know, it was already founded that they have foundation of, of, uh, interests. Um, and in fact, it goes back even before eighteen, uh, ninety-seven in the Supreme case, which they had to support. It automatically comes from, uh, eighteen fifty-nine, which is the Act of Kuliana, I should say, the amended Act of eighteen fifty-nine, which if you look at, um, HRS today, it's to support that, which is HRS seven dash one, which speaks of, uh, water being free to all. Um, and so, you know, that is already, that was again, uh, reestablished to the eighteen ninety-seven, uh, court case, um, because they, um, the kuliana had rights to, and you know, and it's not only kuliana, but also the kanaka Maori have received their rights and their rights are still, uh, actually are being protected under the state. It's the state's responsibility, obligation to protect not only kuliana, the kuliana act, but also the kanaka, uh, the kanaka Maori. Um, in eighteen thirty-nine, right, the Bill of Rights was established and it stated that, um, three, three groups of people in Hawaii had vested rights, which is of course the Mo'een, which is the monarch, and the Ali'i's and the Makainan'na. And so, uh, these, these laws, I still recognize, uh, your article, um, twelve, Section Seven of the nineteen seventy-six, um, uh, Constitution of Hawaii recognizes that, uh, there is an obligation to protect the rights of the kanaka Maori, um, and the kuliana. So, you know, all that being said, um, it is, I think, the obligation of, of, of this council to, uh, object or actually, um, to find, uh, in favor of the kuliana and to have the, um, Lani'opoko, um, Lani'opoko, uh, company, irrigation company actually to consult because there is, there is a viable interest that these people have. So they do not have the sole ownership or decision to make whether or not rates can be raised. They have to consult, uh, with the kuliana and with actually the kanaka community.
We just passed one minute, one minute left.
Okay. Okay. So in eighteen, I mean nineteen ninety-three, of course, one oh three one fifty public law stated that, you know, um, the sovereignty of the kanaka Maori was never given. So that means all rights established in eighteen thirty-nine, just today are still viable and still up running. Mahalo. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Wallerstein, we're going to go to what we have on here is called, uh, the next, uh, phone participant. Um, so you will hear a request to unmute, you'll press star six and then, um, state Okay. We sent the request, not hearing anything. Uh, it was caller user number eleven. Uh, Mr. Wallerstein, if you can move on to the next one, please. Okay. We just sent. Please, uh, press star six and unmute and let us know if you would like to testify. In the meantime, we've had one more request to testify for folks on the WebEx. Uh, Mr. Daniel, what was the? Aloha Kiko. Um, so after we finish with the phone requests, uh, we'll turn it back to you. And again, anyone else on the WebEx wishing to testify, let us know. Appreciate everyone's patience here. We're trying to accommodate everyone, work with technology, so appreciate the flexibility Okay. Uh, the request from that user, we have one more user on the phone we're sending the request to now. So when you hear, press star six, just let us know if you wish to testify. press star six, just let us know if you wish to testify. Oh, that user appears to be gone. Uh, so let's turn back to the WebEx. Mr. Polakiko, um, Mr. Wallerstein, if you can unmute him. And again, uh, anyone else who sent a request through the chat box, appreciate it, thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Uh, it's a little tough to hear in the bathroom, but let me mute myself.
Let's try that again, how about now?
Yeah, that's good, yep. Uh, please go ahead, you have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you very much, my name is Daniel, Hareku'ule aloha Polakiko. I reside in Kauula Valley on my Kulianna land as a Kulianna heir, uh, passed on to the lineage to my father, to myself and to my family. I represent the Polakiko Ohana, living here in the valley. And I would like to touch on a few points that I have heard, um, already mentioned and I'd like to hopefully provide some clarity. I have five points. One is, it is stated that, uh, the main reason or doing large part to seaworms in stream flow standard mandate, um, that Launio Poco irrigation is finding themselves in, uh, the situation that they are financially unable to continue unless they get this rate increase. And I would strongly challenge this claim and demand complete transparency, um, in all the data that they may or may not have submitted or say that they have, uh, to substantiate their claim. Uh, because we, as family members, as Kulianna Kuikahi LLC, which is a, uh, an organization that was started and is membered by families of Kauula on a Kulianna land, um, we have substantial records that can validate an opposing point to, uh, the challenge that even in the present situation, that they are capped of resources so severely that they are unable to continue unless this rate increase, um, is allowed. Uh, also, I would say on the same, in the same sense that, uh, just a reminder, USGS recently commissioned and is now operating monitoring systems here in the Valley of Kauula to measure the, the river, um, uh, inflow. And that data has been accumulating and so that is already available information, I especially would like, uh, the public and yourself as the commission to be aware that even in, uh, the validation of that, please be aware that we have ample documented videos and other facts that would substantiate that, um, the water that is in the stream currently that they say they are putting into the stream is well below the mandate, um, even at the current standard, because it was supposed to be implemented in stages. And so I would like to make that known. Second point is that I would like to just bring clarity to the, what seems to be gross negligence in the operation and maintenance of this antiquated system that we were talking about and that was, uh, discussed earlier in part, in large part by, uh, Kipo Kikona. And that also is highly documented and verifiable. Whatever upgrades they've done recently, they have their own motives for doing, but it is nothing to do with increasing or improving the current system. And again, we can talk with more clarity on that, you can always reach us through Kulianna Kuikahi LLC, myself, Daniel Polakiko, my phone number is two seven six three two six four. My email is dhkpolakiko@gmail.com if you want to reach me and I can get you connected with all that information. Point number three, by their own admittance, uh, one of their attorneys have stated that failure to allow this increase will effectively cause their company not to be able to continue to operate. And, um, I would just like to say that if anything, this is prima evidence of their own inability to operate this PUC diligently and capably, um, and so enough said about that. Fourth, I'd like to just remind the public and yourself, um, I, my mahalo, the DCA's presence, um, in this discovery process and that they are taking their own approach to investigating and discovering, uh, more information. And again, if you guys would like to get information from the families of Kauula, it is, uh, really available, just get ahold of us. Finally, um, I want, I'd like to talk real quickly about the, uh, lack of ability to sustain, um, the current need from the primary source of water, which is of course, the Kauula, the Kauula stream. This fact is, uh, self-evident, obviously, and yet for some reason, with every development that we, uh, oppose, we bring that as, bring this as evidence as to why further development cannot be supported, because apparently we don't even have enough water for the developments that are already, um, in operation. And again, this is exactly what we're talking about. And so this PUC finds, this PUC and this company finds themselves, Peter Martin and company find themselves in a situation where they are, um, absolutely not capable to support what is currently available and then to argue that they have red- red- readily available sources for further development is something that should be questioned. Finally, I would just like to say on a personal note, that, uh, when I say that we recognize our repairing water rights, our Kulianna water rights, and that we utilize those, those water rights on a daily basis with our Lo'e Kalo protected by Hawaii State Law and with, uh, drawing our waters from the stream directly, I also like to point out the Kumulili versus Horner case, uh, which would establish precedent showing that, uh, our Kulianna rights have always existed. Yes, have always existed. So again, uh, this is just the, the tip of the iceberg. I would again, uh, mahalo you folks for the opportunity to testify. And if it sounds like there's more to be said, because there's so, there is so much more, but there are ways for you to find that information. Please mahalo for your diligence, aloha.
Thank you, Mr. Polakiko. Uh, we've had a couple more requests come in and so next is, uh, Kahaku Kahuna. Uh, Mr. Wallerstein, if you could, uh, unmute.
Aloha. I'm here, Kahaku Kahuna. Aloha, I op- oppose the permit use of and right to a rate hike. First of all, let me, let me remind everyone that their possession of these lands was your adverse possession from the original owners from which they purchased these lands from. Second, that there are living Kulianna landowners of these lands he continues to portion off and sell. Third, that the actions of West Maui's land are not purely or pono to or for the aina. This individual does not understand the Maui'ikee concept, understanding of living harmoniously with the land and water. As he is not from these lands, he lacks the connection of Kulianna landowners too. We, the heirs of these lands of our ancestors, speak on behalf of our duty to protect and allow the lands of our Piko. As a teacher with a master's degree in science, I firmly believe the land is obviously and evidently crying for the water more than new development. The damage done for over a hundred years due to the lack of water and water diversion can no longer continue. Also, Kulianna landowners are the sole protectors of the water as stated by the Kulianna land rights. As more and more of their needs increase for the use of the water, we find their blatant disrespect and desecration upon our land and just to place these water lines into the aina. I'm speaking of he who is requesting for that right. The kupuna directly affected are directly disturbed, leave their spirit in unrest. We find people who lack the capacity to do so in a pono manner as they continue to disrupt the aina. We, the konohiki, ali'i and Kulianna of these lands sincerely request to deny his right to rate hike for the reasons presented today. As the Kulianna landowners return home, according to aloreo rights, the county of Maui will find there will be many challenges with this exact company and other issues moving forward. Water is just the beginning of what is yet to come. Even if you are indifferent with aloreo rights, then I would recommend you move in the, in the different, in a different direction, most harmonious to the land. The land cannot sustain this type of overindulgence of its natural resources to feed one's pockets with the profits of land sales and home development. If we fail to live harmoniously with the land, what will be left for the next generation? Really, what will be left? Rate, rate hike should be denied as it feeds a further development of more people, means more homes, means more water. The need to hike the prices is just to justify the need to expand for wealth and read, not land preservation. I firmly submit my opposition on behalf of my kupuna who stand very present with me and in our lands of Maui. Mahalo, no ka'ohana or heirs of Mawana, Pi'ilani, Kakai, Ke'u'lu, House of Ulu, House of Ee, House of Mahi and House of Kiyafe. Mahalo.
Thank you. Uh, next person that has requested to testify is Noilani Ahia. And as we unmute you, please, anyone else, if you wish to testify, please send a chat. Also, look, if you raise your hand, try and monitor that, but those are all the requests we've had so far. So, Mr. Wallerstein, if we can unmute, please. Thanks again, everyone, appreciate your flexibility. There, thank you, unmuted.
Aloha, Mike Hakul, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, thank you.
Mahalo nui, um, commissioners for being here tonight and taking testimony, uh, I'll try to be brief. Um, I'm also de- a descendant of Pi'ilani. Um, Kamalu Ulu Olele, the original name for Lahaina, is one of the most sacred places in all of Kohave'i'pai'aina. That is why the capital was put there. Um, Kamalu Ulu Olele is the home of Moku'ula and our most famous Wahine Akua, who still protects us and still guards us, and she is a guardian of the water. Water is life, as you've heard said many, many times before, eola ika vae, and without the water, we all perish. Our people, as was stated before, understand Ma'ukatumakai flow, they understand the relationships between what happens at the top and what happens all the way down to Kinalua to the ocean. And when you disrupt that, you disrupt the entire cycle that provides water for food for life. So what I've witnessed from West Maui land and Launio Poco irrigation is a complete disrespect and disregard of this process. I have been to Kauula Stream multiple times over the last few months and it is always dry. There is no water in Kauula Stream. I've been up, up Kauula Valley to the hydro plant where they are pumping water from and I see leaks, I see water spewing all over the place, not going back into the awai. And it's completely and utterly disrespectful to water itself. This company has no regard for the water or for the people who rely on the water for life. Launio Poco Irrigation Company should absolutely deny a rate increase. It's not only immoral, it doesn't make any logical sense. We all know that they have multiple developments coming up and they want more water for their developments. They, um, cannot meet the inflow sta- stream standards right now, so they've chosen to put in this water line to pump water that they can't get from the stream, because the stream is dry. And why is the stream dry? Well, you have to look back at their history. So in con- in conclusion, the last thing that I wanted to discuss was the treatment of Ivi kupuna and the burials that are along the path of this pipeline that they put in in order to tap into the groundwater. As you probably already know, this was an unpermitted project, they found a loophole in the grading ordinance, um, and it didn't require any, didn't trigger any shipti review, any state historic preservation review, and so there was no archaeological inventory survey done for this project. And they did hit and desecrate Ivi kupuna. And five of our mothers and grandmothers had to get arrested trying to protect our burials. This is outrageous, because this company already knew the possibility of hitting burials and they were told by the burial council not to do any further work until there was more investigation and they did it anyways. This company, West Maui Land and its conglomerates and Launio Poco Irrigation Company have no respect for the people of this aina, for the aina itself or for the vi- that provides life for everybody on Maui. I, I urge you to please not, um, not give them this rate increase that they are seeking. Mahalo nui.
Thank you, Ms. Ahia. That brings us to conclude, everyone who's, uh, requested or signed up. Okay, so at this point, please raise your hand, use the raise hand feature, send a chat message, we'll wait. Short bit. Oh. Thank you, uh. All right, we have, uh, Mr. Wallerstein, can please unmute Mr. Raderman? Oh, we have another second one, Mr. Price, so we'll go, we'll first with Mr. Raderman.
Hi, um, I'm just coming to you as a resident of the Launio Poco area. We bought here about fifteen, eighteen years ago and developed our home and our farm. And this, uh, the county of Maui mandates that we farm up here, that we grow food. And there's a lot of people who don't, but we do, and there's a lot of people who do, an awful lot of people who do. And we need the water. And my comment is that while Launio Poco Irrigation Company hasn't been as straightforward to us as they can be, they are doing their best to keep the water flowing so that our lawns, our farms, and importantly, our common areas don't go brown and that would cause a fire hazard. So we understand that they need to increase the, uh, the rates significantly, simply because now they're pumping the water from wells up to the reservoir and that's costing them thousands and thousands of dollars that, that wasn't spending before. And our water rates have been very, very low, probably the lowest in the state for irrigation purposes. And it just seems fair to me and anybody else who I talk to up here in our community, that they get a fair rate increase to be able to sustain what they've been doing for us. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raderman. I believe, uh, Mr. Price, you waved your hand, uh, we'll unmute you, thanks.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I'd just like to say that, uh, I'm a former Public Utility Commissioner in the state of Alaska, with the Regular Commissioner of Alaska, since retired, obviously, and I was chairman of that commission. And I think what stands out most here is I haven't seen a rate case filed, I don't know how you judge whether it's likely they'll prevail without a rate case, how the commissioners would judge that if there hasn't been a rate case filed. I have seen some documentation on your site, the commission's site, that showed purportedly financials, which were unaudited and frankly, made no sense. I think this is a big challenge for your commission, and I've seen this before with a utility that's owned by the developer, um, where it becomes mismanaged to a point of absurdity. So I urge the commission to be very careful here and look out for the public interest in establishing rates, if they do establish a temporary, make it temporary refundable. I do agree that the utility should make money, but if it loses money because of mismanagement, that's on the investors, not on the repairs. And I, I do think this has been, based on the accounting records I have seen, um, horribly mismanaged and also based on the history of, uh, knowing this was coming and not doing anything about it as far as restriction of the surface water. Um, I, I, and now to come to the, I hope they're not coming to their ratepayers to ask for capital to invest in wells so that they can provide water, because as you know in rate making theory, you get, you get rates established on assets that are put in service. In fact, if you're asking for money ahead of time in order to be able to put in wells, that's more in the nature of an equity investment and not a willing equity investment for the ratepayers. So I, I understand, I've seen these situations, they're ugly, um, but I would suggest that an annual audit henceforth be required of this utility, um, and that the commission exercise proper rate making theory in establishing rates in a very, very difficult mess. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Uh, Mr. Misso, you've come up on the camera, do you wish to testify? Yep, Mike, if you can, uh, Mr. Wallerstein, if you can unmute him, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. Yes, please go ahead.
So yeah, I bought, I bought my property in two thousand, um, seven, and, uh, just like the, one of the last gentlemen just said, they make us have a farm, and we have to have water for our farms, which is a little bit frustrating, only having water for two days a week right now. And we're having a really hard time watering our plants and making sure that everything's getting water, and that's been really frustrating. And it's even more frustrating that they keep on wanting to add more parcels and more development. If there's not enough water, why do we want to continue to keep on adding and adding and adding? When we bought in two thousand seven, the properties in front of us were supposed to stay big ranches. Now all of a sudden, that's changed. When I bought in two thousand seven, I would not have bought my property if I would have known about this actual developments that are going on. They developed into the mountains, they added that, which they weren't supposed to. And now they're trying to develop down in front, which I'm really frustrated. And again, if I would have known what they're telling me now, I would have not bought in two thousand seven. They told me one thing, and now they're doing another thing, and I think it's greed is what I believe it is. And they're just doing, getting by with wherever they need to get to, they know how to do the rules and get by it. And I'm just really frustrated. And again, if there's a shortage of water, why is the county of Maui allowing them to do more development? It makes no sense at all. We're all frustrated. And, uh, the county's making us have this farm, so we don't even have a choice. We have to have this farm. So you're gonna say that we have to have a farm, and we have to have water to do our farm, but yet there's not enough water, and then the county's gonna allow them to develop even more. So again, that'd be on them. They should not be trying to develop other more properties in front of us. That's telling us there's not enough water, so stop the developments in front of us. I'd be willing to actually pay the extra amount of money in front, as long as they don't develop in front of me like they weren't supposed to. So if they're gonna develop in front of me, that means there's not a water shortage, that means it's just greed. And I'm really, really frustrated. So either take one or the other. Uh, either give us, you know, make us pay more money for water, but then don't build any more houses in front of us. That's not, that's not right. You can't have both ways. Say there's a shortage of water, but we want to build more houses. So again, I think I'm frustrated, and I'm saying it for the community that I'm hearing from, and I think we're all frustrated. And we're frustrated we only get water two days a week, and yet the county's telling us we have to maintain a farm, uh, to be able to get farmland is what we're supposed to. So it's sort of like telling us two things, we have to have water, we have to have a farm, and you don't want to give us water. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mishun. Uh, we just had somebody else come on the camera. The title on the tile is Aaron, do you wish to testify? Mike, can you unmute, please?
So I, I was just joining, I was just joining, I'm actually on the mainland, and, uh, I received a notice, and I'm just really joining the meeting now, so.
Oh, sorry, uh, do you wish to testify? We're not trying to put you on the spot, but, um...
Well, it was my understanding that, uh, you know, before any development was allowed, they had approved that they have the water. And ever since you guys even started watering the, the pathways at the side of the highway, we've had water problems. Uh, I agree with the other gentleman, I don't know that money is the answer to this problem here. And, um, that's a huge, huge increase in the cost. But there's also not the service, and I don't see a promise of the service for the cost. And, um, I'd like to know if anyone has the answer to, what happened to show me the water before any development was allowed? That was my understanding for the last fifteen years I've been on the island. That's what I have to offer.
Thank you, sir. Um, can you please say your name for the record? Sorry.
Aaron Leiter, one hundred E two Apollo.
Great, thank you. Um, as far as I can see, that's everyone who has requested, so we'll do one more call. Uh, so you see there, raise your hand, uh, turn the camera on, or send a chat request to the host. And we'll wait a short spell. Okay, so no other requests, we're gonna, um, bring our public hearing to a conclusion. So thank you, everyone, tonight for your, uh, participation and patience, this is a first for us. Um, we appreciate your willingness to, um, work with us in this technology platform, thanks again. The commission and the consumer advocate will continue with review of the applicant's requests. The process will conclude with the commission's issuance of a written decision regarding the, uh, the request. Uh, this concludes tonight's public hearing for docket number twenty twenty dash zero zero eight nine. Thanks for attending and participating, and the hearing is adjourned. Thank you. Please, everyone have a good evening.